Okay, I have six.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call May 17, 2023 Special Delray Oaks Planning Commission Meeting in my head.
Commissioner Creaker?
Here.
Commissioner Berger?
Here.
Commissioner Motti?
Here.
Vice Chair Lud?
Here.
Chair Heyward?
Here. And I'd like to have you all explain your name. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America through the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, the very essence. Yeah, I will turn the meeting over to me study. Any study? Visit me down the hall if you want. But it's cycle.
Chair Heyward. I'm here today again to give a presentation and provide a short preview of what we talked about in the last two to three workshops. And then ultimately try and get a little direction if there is any more that you want to provide on the existing policy and amended policies for this six cycle housing. So that's the focus of today's presentation for the planning commission. And it's also a listening session all over a little bit of what we learned on May 9. I don't have a map for the site inventory of short from day 1 to there. And really just review the policies and programs that and the strategies that we're using to meet the regional housing needs. Allocation and identify the new versus the amended programs. And basically try and get if there is any input on if there's more programs that you want or any changes, things like that on the global scale. Our work is going to patch into the writing and provide the ideas. Yeah, so it's our quick review. We are, we developed the community profile, we have a draft of the housing element six cycle. We looked at the different resources that we had, looking at the listing of sites that we've gone through. Identified our constraints, which is chapter four, all these are different chapters. We reviewed our last common element to see what has been done. We've completed a draft of a fair housing analysis, affirmative fair housing assessment, lengthly. And then we're at the goal objectives programs and updating those at this point. That's what you've been seeing last week at our ninth meeting and before you today. Again, community participation is so key, so this is why we're here for you again. Appreciate the input and the involvement of the planning commission on housing element. Thank you. Yeah, so we are at 184 for 12 for this number four. And it's quite a bit larger than what this small city has had in the past. It went into them of housing needs. We are in a small bounded by jurisdictions and built out the primary area that's vacant. Outside the city's airport, which is also a restriction and then grounded by the L and N. And we also have the airports and safety zone issues to deal with and inability to move to toward the Tarpees area and development there because of the requirements of the safety zone and the air force and clearance. Next slide. So that leaves us with, you know, where are we to provide the 184 available sites? You don't build the sites, you don't build the unit, but we do need to provide the location how they could be built. And we looked at the unit, the fifth cycle in 2019 adopted, looked at a number of different sites in addition to former order. And that was, those were actually determined by the council and different workshops to be inappropriate and unavailable in environmental constraints active issues. Next slide. So we are now focused on the updated map site, figure four of the housing element identifies four sites. So we talked about sites one and one eight on the previous element five. And new sites K1 performance and K2. The site K1 on your left is the blue outline. I'm going to go right to that. I don't know. K1 is a little to the left, well. That's 20 acres on my one hundred percent partnership. And then K2 is a new site on the corner over there. And that's the location of the current approved RV site for 210 sites. Next slide. So looking for any other sites, if there's any input at all that you can think of for other locations that would be appropriate, the services, potential for plans, services. That's no time, we're happy to consider them. Next slide. So the focus for tonight, policy and program. That's really the meat of the document. All the other elements are really building blocks to get to what programs and policies that we want to do to assist the development of housing, providing adequate sites, improve our overview is of these programs and policies, trying to improve and conserve our housing stock. We've heard before that most of the houses are the services that we use in 50 that were actually built for the conservers housing stock, preserving risk conversion of lower moderate, low or very low income units to market rate units. That's a requirement under the housing law and definitely provide equal housing. And like, so we're going to, just these goals and policies, I think is important to understand from the city's perspective, they're actually really good and valid. They can be consistent throughout the history of your housing element. They're part of the staff report as well. There are two, about two pages, three or four pages of the staff report. It's really accurate about two of our existing programs. And yeah, I just think it's worthy to say that we're not really recognizing the new overall, overall weekly goals. These match HCB requirements that are consistent with the numerous meetings and reviews that have already occurred through HCB in 2019. And they're worthy goals, right adequate sites to build in housing units for all income levels and to meet the cities' fair, fair other needs. It's all in to encourage the trade of wide range of housing by location type and unit price to meet the sustainability of the city or the goal need. C, work to remove governmental and non-governmental constraints to housing development. Requirement of the need of use of the goal. Goal D for goal equal housing opportunities for all persons. And of all of them, they're decades actually, given the early housing elements are valid. So a current goal and continue to conserve goal D and improve the condition of existing housing stock to make sure it's favorable for all of the residents. I just wanted to point these out. They've been, many of you I'm sure read these. They are not in the staff report course, but also they were part of the housing element that has been on the city's website and went through a year of different areas back in 2019. Of six cycles. So I'm not recommending any changes if they're doing language that bothers anyone.
There was one on goal D and it's a second year line. And it needs special, I don't think it's a special needs and it's for families with children and then female headed households.
That's a category under, you have single parent household. I think it's because of the concern as, you know, it's a really good question. But it is something that is a sense of that how they act track. And again, also in terms of special needs, you look at seniors and I think the idea of it's looking at others that have or single mothers that have, what about career work could be done to. We discussed maybe HCB and then that's changed there. I know, I appreciate what you're saying, I thought about too, but it is a grab it comment.
Okay.
Many years. Households. Assume they were right.
It's. For the apartments you have, there's a part to me, anytime a senior facility accommodate that qualify?
Yes, as senior, senior in particular for your housing needs, what we've merged to over the years is that, you know, you have an A population. And so senior housing facility would be certainly be a qualifier for for the housing, provided they're.
Like apartment or some rights you count?
I don't know whether income and affordability levels on?
Well, no, I mean, okay, but it's just like, but he had a facility 30 bit, that kind of story you did, I'm not 30.
I don't think they count that.
That's. Yeah. A lot of places. In the group, it's like four social networks is open and then. I can't remember, but they have various types of low range from no care needed. Everything is rental, I guess, part, part of the mission, that extension goes. And then all the way to full assistance here, then three or four different levels. But there are people that are permanent residents there. So that was why I was curious.
So I, I think the two parts of that question.
What?
Two parts to that answer. We'll go back to the affordability. So it depends on what rents that they charge, so they need, they know a very low budget income level and that would be assigned and it depends on their, if they are SO, SRO, single room only. Because of the acronym, so that they have kitchen facilities, you know, they have to have their individual training. So it depends on how to make up this and affordability. So in context to what we're talking about later, maybe, you know, park that for a minute, let me get through this and see if there's a location that is specifically. Thank you. So to get to the next slide, we're just going to go through the, we just talked about existing goals and taking your input on that. Now we're talking about existing programs. And which ones that we're recommending for updating. And you'll see in your staff report, what we also provided, this is something that. We sort of, we're using of the tracking matrix. And so on the, at the middle of the staff report, we go after the. After the report itself. And the page starts with review of the existing programs on the commission meeting, makes an open, the startings. So what we're doing here is that we're going to, it mirrors basically the presentation. We're going through and we're looking and we're identifying that we're recommending a program to be revised or updated. I mean, commission can say, I don't find that idea, you know, tonight or during the 30 day review and say, no, I think you should not, think you should delete it and we don't want that program or something like that. So, but the categories are that we're providing to you what our recommendation is after talking to the city manager, et cetera, working for the city for a while. Is we would suggest for, as an example, for program A1, we retain the program, but you update it from six cycle. And the reason why we're doing that is that we want to update it to identify the new sites. The program basically states, provide adequate sites to build new housing units for all income levels and to meet the city's fair care of housing needs. We've got to have a good program, it meets the goal of A. And so the program A1 is accommodated, listed in city freedom, you know, housing needs. Assessing allocation. So we recommend move that program forward. And we're updating it because we're adding sites in order to meet that. And I think that's appropriate as well. So that's program A. Part of A2, we're basically continuing the program, it's provided a written protocol for compliance with AB 2062. But we're moving it because it seems like it's more associated instead of housing opportunities homelessness. So we might move that program to another location. But so that's the minor update. And then for the next one, the, you know, this is a jump around that has been on the city's books. It's the city adopting an inclusionary housing ordinance. And an inclusionary housing ordinance basically says if you have a certain number of units, the developer comes in and I'm going to build 100 units. The city has a more limited space, X percentage of those need to be affordable. And if you don't do that through a development agreement, it requires anyone who comes in for a certain number of units, the city basically has to comply with that ordinance. So we're recommending, we retain that program and we're suggesting to identify 20% as the minimum for that. And I think that's also consistent with the properties in the form of four orders, 20%. So if anyone comes in, I'm going to build a number of units, minimum 20%. So we're recommending that program to be retained. And the program B2, under the Affordable Housing Ball. Is facilitating all for the housing for all income levels. So it's a no brainer to reclaim that in terms of the language itself. And we was talking about how that could be done. So no change. And basically this, basically also says, they will also work with developer, the third paragraph to facilitate, to be affordable housing development. And find one gap and financing, things like that, that could be used to be able to be able to actually develop affordable housing. And then the next housing voucher program is about section eight. And we are asking that to be continued. We were suggesting to be that we provide a little bit more specific information regarding that. This is really coupled with your fair housing, affirmative fair housing report. We really don't have very many housing voucher programs in the city. It's something that if we provide more information perhaps to the public, maybe seniors or others or those in need could be able to take advantage of the housing voucher program, which basically pays for some portion of the rent to the apartment or landlord. And so we're just basically going to continue this. And we're fans are providing more information to outreach, I think a lot of what we heard last, last study to continue outreach for those in need. Next slide. Any questions up to this point, changes? Did I skip people? Okay, this, yeah, this came up and I wanted to both identify, you know, that those programs as existing too. So I think I did that before, but B4 was something that came up under the 2019 housing element. And it's essentially to the, to the extent that this can be implemented, the city considers adoption of the new ordinance in plans for fair housing law that, that basically allows or provides that first time home buyers be or others for affordable housing be. Be provided to citizens of Delray Oaks on a preferential basis. So that you're basically trying to meet the needs of your citizenry first. That's that.
So residents and workers, is there anything else on?
I think it would, all the details would be, these are, you know, programs to be developed. So, okay, you know, the ordinance isn't going to be developed yet. And any ordinance comes before the planning commission first. You would have an opportunity to look at each of these. Thank you. And then under affordable housing still develop the program B5, develop identity bonus ordinance consistent with state law. So there's no change associated with that. The thing to understand is there is already state law, we already have to apply for the state law requirements. So this would be, and the state law does change quite a bit over the years. And so we have not developed the density bonus ordinance specific to Delray Oaks, but we do if anyone comes in, we have to comply with state laws. So this is something APD wants to see. Program B6, the French. Oh, facilitate affordable rental units B6, and that might be different in layout. So if you can look at these things under your, under your staff report. The city will acquire loan interest loans grants and subsidies to facilitate affordable rental units. We're just going to be updating that based upon, you know, any new or coming opportunities. So removing constraints, we saw before perhaps that we have a chapter in the housing element about governmental and non-governmental constraints. So removing constraints is a program C1 is an important one that the HCB wants to see. So supporting efforts, public and private groups providing housing for elderly and disabled, including the distance, obtaining permanence and streamlining. Streamlining consistent with F35 or where appropriate, waving city fees, the rate for regular payment. Essentially, this is trying to streamline your process for those, those who might need help, they have barriers to achieving affordable housing or using having affordable housing. Example could be, you know, someone with a disability or something like that. But removing those constraints. Updating the ADU ordinance program C2, that we've changed that somewhat already to encourage the construction of ADU, ADU's accessory dwelling units. And we will have to, and we'll want to strengthen that program. So you'll see that in the update in the details, but we'll, we need to monitor the number of ADUs on an annual basis, provide more outreach at the city. And trying to encourage the development of ADUs as a potential way to, you know, help others that would otherwise have to move out of the city. And try and reduce the amount of displacement from the city. So that's what we have to do that for the ADUs. And we have similar program already, so it's just updating the mechanics of it. And the difference here, the other update is because of ADU ordinance will stop to the city, so we accomplish that. And C3. And B3, admitting any constraints? Yeah, we're demanding the, so this has some of the old language in it. It says amend the zoning ordinance to eliminate numbers of persons in the, in the household, definition of family, that argument done. We have amended the zoning ordinance to support traditional, the core of housing. We do need to do that. So these are some of the constraints that we've identified. And in other words, that we, we don't have the appropriate ordinances already in place that are required against state law. And so this will be removing those constraints, we're mending this policy to be specific about that. Thank you, C4. This is also an important policy, a non-governmental constraint, but the city may not have as much control over its availability of water. So we're amending any completely. Project C4, which is ensuring the availability of adequate water supply to serve long-term housing needs of the city or to meet the water emergency for affordable housing. So we have a little bit more to that policy to meet on a regular basis with providers and try and support the city have done in the past, provision of additional water supplies for the city. And there's also a whole reference to four, I guess, from the C4. Program C. Program C, D1, promoting fair housing by providing education and referral materials. That's something we want to continue. Program D2, providing opportunity for and encourage the development of adequate housing for the city's special needs group. That is important for state law, it's also a valid and necessary program for the city. D3, special needs for disabled persons require all new development to be compliant with certain adult codes, eliminate restrictions on occupancy standards, reduce supporting standards. Those are ways that you can promote special needs housing for disabled and ensuring that there's no, that we have equal opportunity housing program. And each of these E programs are also consistent with the analysis that we did in the affirmative AFH, removing fair housing. So D4, we are updating that because it's, let me, next slide. We did adopt another shelter ordinance, so that was part of what this, this program was. And so we're amending this for, sorry, this program in order to address that. And, and that we're approving the discussion that talks about providing financial support or sponsor or sustaining facilities inside or out. And taught, and heard that it's supporting the homes. I think that's consistent with the program for the state. Develop a written process for continued compliance with AB 101. That's a low barrier navigation center, use and write in zero areas known for mixed use and non-residential zones. That's a requirement, that's by state law. And they're going to continue that program, that's what we do. And then E1. Last thing. So the assisting, these are each requirements and ballot programs to continue assisted rehabilitating housing. We may add a little bit of that because there was a discussion at our last meeting on May 9 about different volunteer programs to do that and how to do that. Continuing of co enforcement program B2, that goes to rehabilitating houses and, and working with owners to ensure that houses, housing doesn't get rid of this array. And then energy conservation, energy efficient opportunities as part of the requirements of the housing law. So just continuance of those. Okay. So that's the existing programs and what we propose to be amended. So I think we can quickly go through what are new programs that we're suggesting. This again is exactly what we saw on May 9, the object ready input. Again, we talked about program A1, we're suggesting continuing the program with adding sites K1 and H2 from the asset I didn't want to call the board. Next. This is a proposed new program that you may not have seen this year, but it was actually a program adopted by the planning commission in 2019. And then taken out because the lawsuit that was threatened and was filed. And the city manager was trying to, and attorney were trying to port a lawsuit. So they took out anything having to do with rezoning. So because of that, we had two programs that were, I think, fairly. Supported, went all the way through five different areas of the planning commission. And then, so we're putting those back in. And the develop the mixed use zoning designation was one, and then the zoning ordinance to residential uses of, well, mixed uses. Our intensity where appropriate, commercial zone and visitor serving designations to allow mixed use. So that would sort of speak to site K1 for, as an example, the 20 acres that's along south, that's on general, general law. And is now a zone commercial, but is probably the closest in terms of having services. The way, and there may be other opportunities within the city themselves when land and water does become available, to have a different type of, of mixed use zone within the city that would allow. In the future, perhaps, there was an area that we can find. in the future, perhaps, there was an area that we can find, um, some opportunity for a mixed use. Uh, that's our suggestion. Um. Another program from the planning commission that was recommended in twenty nineteen is a small lot residential. Um, doesn't have to be a new subdivisions, so that, um, providing new small lots similar to bundle cottage homes, uh, things that are now much more popular and prevalent in terms of being able to provide cottage homes or apartment homes, some things that will be smaller, um, more maybe community based, available to, uh, for affordability for housing perhaps. So, and with a privately maintained common open space and, um, mixing with other maybe larger projects. So that's new program. Again, this is the program, the specifics would come with the adoption of, of any such ordinance. And so you have a lot more time that really should end on it. Um, we're, as I mentioned, this is something that we already talked about, updating the A D U program to encourage and monitor A D Us as the city is having in the next eight years. Next, we would like to take advantage of maybe, I think, based upon the history of A D Us in the city, uh, prior to, I think, two, three or the last.
Two, exactly.
Yeah, we do. We have, I think, four open ordinance that are built in A D Us. Okay, so with that, we may be able to use some A D Us for air or to meet arena in six cycles. So we have at least, at least that sort of type of ten, when the H C D will not allow you to use those numbers, the A D Us, unless you can prove that you have a history of development of A D Us. So, um, we'll promote them and retract them and on an annual basis, report on that as what the new program says. We'll work with Karen and determine what number we actually put in for the arena. Okay, next slide. Down to a couple of pages. Uh, yeah, and this is a program two, um, some, they're doing, amending D four and D six. Uh, we moved these, these things, go into a slight amendment and, um, amended D four, um, to address the number mark zero less consistent with state law. We just provided a little bit of detail on that, on the major change. And then the next slide. Uh, one of new programs we're identifying, adopting universal design element ordinance, universal design in the element and, and ordinance set that identified different ways and provide, uh, design that would, uh, principles to allow individuals to remain in their homes more. So building principles that once you adopt a universal design, um, and a process for that, you can, uh, you can basically can help those with physical needs, um, more easily get into homes and have those specific designs, how are you approved and ready? And it's a method, uh, by which you can reduce the displacement and the mobility of people having, people moving out of the area, even people leaving their homes. So that's, that's the purpose behind that. And it's something that other jurisdictions have done and suggested, and I think our May third or May third meeting by one of the one of our two members at Quo. And then, uh, a new program to do, we're already doing, but also sort of doing reporting, uh, just annually report to the city council and the planning commission, which those of you who've been here for a while know that we do this on an, on an annual basis for our annual progress report. So it's a method to, uh, be able to add a program that shows that we're doing this. Um, and, um, that really basically we're recording on monitoring ourselves or how we're doing, on how, on another general program. And then the new program of E five, affirmatively further fair housing, uh, by providing equal opportunity for all future citizens um, to enhance a mobility strategy, encourage a new housing choice of affordability, and follow up into the high resource area. Um, and so that's a new policy that really is specific to A F F H, really trying to reduce displacement. Um, the reason that they got there, and there are, uh, the fact that it's a good policy and program is we really want to link our A F F H analysis to new programs that we're putting in, that's H C D requirements that they'll have, they'll write that because of it. We wanted to push all that. Next slide. So that's it.
So, um, I propose that maybe we'll do a suite of those elements and then just go.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm over there. I can, you know, okay, yeah, we don't have to get back to that. Um. Exactly. Yeah. I was going to discover a little more, you know, questions that I'm, I was a little confused as we do the, the revise and update. I would have thought revise and updating vice versa. What would be the difference between revising and updating the program?
So we're taking comments on the program.
Okay. Well. Okay, I'm just, I'm trying, we'll comment, I'm trying to read this and understand it. I'm not even sure what we're coming, but I'm not, I don't, there's no, I don't know what was there before, so I don't.
But what was there in the common element?
Well, without looking at it, but I mean, usually we get right up and it's like there's the strikeouts, strikeouts and stuff, so you can see what's being changed by.
So these are the existing policies, uh, so the changes are not in the production.
The one we revised and updated.
So this is the good thing twenty nineteen, fifth cycle, great question.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, I see revising, I think I'm a lot different.
So what are you looking at in a process that's used for updating home now?
Okay.
That's number one. That's that chart. You're looking at policies from the fifth cycle.
Okay, right.
Been adopted or revised.
Yeah, sorry.
So this is a six cycle. We're talking about what do you think we would want to change in it, revise it, or, and this is the city's consultant's recommendation as to what to do. Some of them, um, you know, I obviously use the word of energy in the power.
I noticed, I was going to ask.
I don't think we need to worry about the semantics.
Yeah.
It's what is it that you think about? The program, um, recommendation from the consultant. I'll, I'll be happy to explain why you recommend updating it. I think we needed to add sites K one and K two.
Uh huh.
And that's also found in the power department, just some, when we talked about the carbon.
When you say, when it says revise, now that you're asking us if we.
And this is a consultant recommendation, like it said up on the top, recommending a yellow highlighted, should it?
Yeah, no, it's fine. I, I just think, I get on. If, I'm just not sure what they revise or update, this, there's nothing.
Right, so this is the existing one.
Okay, so.
And then we can go to A one, we want to show, yeah.
I didn't know it's strikeouts in some of your slides. I, I guess it's would have been, if that's what I'm, so like, there is some strikeouts.
Um, I, this is meant to be a wordsmith process, honestly. It's meant to get direction.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we will do a wordsmith process and have the floor from.
Well, I don't want to make, I don't want to make those in a small document. Is that, I did that between five years, I mean.
The, the H C D, for instance, we will, maybe it's a good idea to just say what the next steps are. There'll be, this will be on, um, Howard's website for thirty days. Then we'll be accepting anybody's comments, written comments, so we can identify any changes, whatnot. Those will be track changes that we'll see those when they get coming. And then that document that after two weeks goes to the H C D. Then they come back and they give us after ninety days, all of their comments. Then we provide to the city the comment letter and the track changes version. So that goes to the planning commission and the new, and then it goes to the city council. So there will be.
Right, no, I'm, I'm not trying to be.
And it's A one.
I just, I'm asking input, I'm kind of, I don't know what change it was, but you know what?
The, I don't. The change is specific to K one and K two.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, because. All right.
Would it have, would it have a specific slide that showed the updates, um, regarding each one of these, um, elements you talked about?
So I, yeah, I think Connor, I think what we're asking is to go to A one, uh, for the new programs, which is further down.
Yeah.
Although it, it still won't help because we don't have a, um, it doesn't have, uh, you have changes.
Okay, that's fine.
It's certainly something you can, I can tell you, but, um, you know. Yeah, this, this is generally, this is what we're changing. We're, we're adding the A D Us and we're adding K one and K two. The language from, um, the twenty nineteen out in element was really specifically developed by H C D.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We're not going to switch that around.
Yeah, no, no, and, and, and I'm not looking towards, I'm, I'm just, mine, mine was more, uh, thirty, thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's right, I understand.
There's something on here, you're asking, it's not my fault.
Yeah, you have a lot of pieces of information before you, we understand. They wanted to give you a staff report to sort of describe what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Um, and sort of they.
Lots later. It was fine, I was, I'm just getting yourself, oh, I'm done.
All right, we're about to ask.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You can talk about K one and K two being that the city doesn't know those two properties. K two as far as I'm convinced, it basically can't crack. For recreational vehicles. So there is any permanent there. This, and, and the owners will apply and put a can crack there. So I, I just don't, it isn't an argument base. I don't understand how we can put that into our. And then the second is K one, which, you know, isn't so, is, I mean, processes are not pending, is there anything? We don't own it and we don't know the intent of the owners.
So those are great questions. And, um, the program is to utilize these sites for, that are available sites for arena. So could be a company, but for what I'm in, in those sites. You're right. So a little bit, it, it was, it's actually, that's a great question. So we're, we're requesting to rezone those sites to be able to, right now, they're all on, everything's commercial, it's commercial. Um, the ownership of the one and one A is city owned. So it's very easy. We've been, um, we have talked to the owners of K one and K two, sorry. The, um, and there is a willingness to discuss rezoning and putting.
It's freebie.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
So for K one specifically, um, I, they're amenable to, uh, looking at a mixed use zone.
Oh, big, big, you have, oh, great.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that's a, a, a good opportunity for mixed use and, um, for affordable. So the idea that the city would initiate a rezoning of that to be arena for affordable sites. Um, for K two, which is actually really interesting, when we talked about the cottage sites, the cottage, the park models, things like that. Each of the two hundred and ten, um, RV sites are approximately four thousand square feet. So there is an opportunity actually there, and there is some willingness to, to look at that, to have some of those two hundred and ten sites be considered for zoning the workable ones. So given that it's already going to happen one way or the other, although it is an RV, uh, quote unquote, park already approved um, under a commercial, I mean, of the initiative, so they can build on it, um, with services, um, because of the initiative. There is the, the opportunity for, um, you know, four thousand square foot, I guess, and with a community kind of. And, and all the questions are great. And finally, one.
The only thing I, so the K two, uh, I'm picturing that motorhomes coming and going and all that. This is intended as, it's both like you take your double word and go and be with.
So the, the property that's already approved, the development of the initiative has three different phases. And, um, yes, part of it would be, they would, um, I said, like, assumption would be that part of that would be remaining an RV park for visitors. Part of it would be subdivided for use for, uh, small lot, you know, tiny lot homes, parking units, they're called. And some of those are, you can put them on wheels and they have, um, you know, the trac around them. And they're, you know, four hundred, five hundred feet, but they are small, they can provide affordability and an opportunity to have a small community there. And, and, um, so you are, you know, continuing the, the, um, conversations with the owners. At the same time, we have enough land, vacant land on site one and one A. Um, but we're considering adding K one and K two because that gives us a little bit more capacity and if that could be, that'd be an opportunity, the, the city may want to approach that. This is just putting it on your housing element as available. It isn't, you know, there's a developing and it isn't getting there.
We could just over get twenty of them, but. Right.
Hey, uh, Mr. Figure A two, any comments, questions?
No, I, I would have been all bad, I think, about the issue, I don't think so, I think, um. No, I think I.
No, thanks.
Um, my, my next question is if we pursue for, um, some of the language in the report, it's to prevent that from happening.
For A two and A two?
Yeah.
Oh, I see, for the new A two or, uh?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
And you're putting, you're basically putting the burden back.
Um, so, yeah. The lawsuit that was, that was filed, um, was based upon, um, an NGO not wanting development to occur in four over. And so.
No, no, that's not exactly, some of the part of that, it was because, remember, it was, they were, they were saying we need to do E I R. That was based previous precedents from the California Supreme Court. That also, that's all changed now with all new housing stuff and news and coming out saying, I mean, everything's changed, bill, 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 right?
Yeah.
All, all of that previous, previous precedent got knocked out. So what they were actually suing, I wasn't saying knocks, they were saying you need to do E I R, E I R for you. But that got overcome by this. So, I don't think, so it's not, that, 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 not, at least on that, at least on the E I R.
Yeah, there were four brands.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and one of them was a water, um, for, um, not having, so I think that, uh, Bishop Figurs correctly, hope it's not going to come back. And we were also, you know, doing their formal document that they wanted in order to
Yeah.
appease the lawsuit. And they actually settled, but they didn't settle, they removed, I guess. They agreed to withdraw it. Um, so it just happened that we got very close to the very end and, um, when we, you know, I think the city was trying to appease and make language changes to soften the language. The only reason I brought that up is because I think it was important to understand that this was something, these were programs that really came before you, a few of those weren't here before, and they were accepted and bought and moved out.
Mr. Figure B one.
Yeah, just want to verify, I know you posed for, uh, update, uh, part of the ad minimum affordability. Which, which categories of the affordability is it? Is three along the line, is it? I can't, I don't know your thoughts, but.
Oh, that's, um, that's a question on the for this particular program is associated not with any levels of affordability, it's just twenty percent affordable. And then, um, is what the inclusionary housing says. And then depending on the data detail of the ordinance and the city adopts going through planning official council, um, we would assign affordability and usually it's based upon the A M I
Hmm.
index, which, um, you heard about the last, um, which is, I, um, yeah.
Twenty percent, uh, that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So we, so it's not, okay, that's, that's all.
Yeah, and if you think that there should be a, we don't need that condition, we don't need to, uh, we could wait. And the city, the planning commission and council tend to determine what you want in your, some of your housing ordinance. I just thought it might be a, a thing to put as a minimum. Um, so it really is.
We, we're, I don't, the, the, how does this turn out with portable, the definition of portable ones? Okay.
And so if there's any direction on that, you want to narrow out the twenty percent, or if you took it out, um, it wouldn't, we just wouldn't change the program.
Mr. River, is twenty percent equitable for the current areas?
Well. That's a policy question. Um, I think that, uh, you know, typically for the former four door land, probably you'll enter into about an agreement. Um, if you put minimum twenty percent, that's usually how that starts. And then there's also density ordinance, but, um, I can answer that question on this.
Yeah, I wish we were, yeah, because, um, they made it eighty-three percent. Didn't know how that.
Right, I think it's the confusion of, yeah, an ordinance or an inclusionary. Right, I think it's the confusion of, yeah, an ordinance or an inclusionary housing ordinance, it just says, if you're gonna develop, I'm a developer. I'm gonna go to the core city and the city have an ordinance or doesn't, that's what the issue is, if it hasn't identified that. If you're gonna develop and you're asking for a hundred units, twenty percent of those units absolutely have to be affordable. Don't come and ask us, right, I think that's exactly what has to be. And then you look at the different categories of affordability within that, uh, very low level lottery.
The other two, they agree on that.
Okay. That was my same question. Yeah, it might be too confusing, maybe we're maybe about twenty percent. Yeah, yeah, let's, I think, let's just, um, that was my idea, it wasn't brought up by anybody else, so I think it's an easy one to eliminate. Okay, eliminate the twenty percent factor, we keep the ordinance, okay, sorry, the program just as it is.
Mr. Figure B two.
No, definitely does that, uh, other question, okay, um, no, I couldn't, I couldn't agree on that.
Yeah, I think maybe focusing on those ones that say no change would be possible because they know, um.
Okay. Did they, you said suggest that we skip over one once again?
Unless you wanted to.
Anybody have a problem with the skipping over the? Unless we get, go by one and you have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, uh, one question before the general, I'm just curious, you know, I think you kind of lead to this, but. Are there examples out there for, since you're saying, say, in rich, you're, you know, for preferential housing? You know, if you're gonna cross one?
I haven't, and this, um, this year, I haven't looked for that, I've looked previously when those were them showing anything. Um, but I have, I haven't seen, I've seen programs before in other housing elements where they didn't have.
Is that kind of like interviews, these trying to do with your teacher out and kind of thing, I hear teacher, yeah, something like that, I can't remember what that is.
I think so, and I, you know, we noticed we did put, can be legally implemented.
Right, right, yeah. No, I just, I just, my question was, can you, if you would see me, I just.
Seen programs, but not specific, um, yeah, not not how the process works.
Okay, it's funny, you're curious.
Okay.
Something makes me wonder if we did have any. But I have seen programs where it's in other housing elements, but I haven't, I think the question was, have you actually seen? The members program is three lines of this, what we want to do, have you seen specifically how it works? No, I have not. But I I don't think it's a complication. It was certainly, um, I mean, if you think about wanting to assist your citizens first, um, this will happen. You know, and we also talked in the house element about, you know, non displacement, um, so it could, that's the goals.
Okay, um, then move on to uh three, uh, for sure.
No, no, no questions.
I think we find, yeah.
I, I would be interested, I think, a lot of people.
Um, I have a question about B four, um, and that the preferred basis for the Delrayo, so I think that's a pretty good, I think, in the current program inside.
I think, um. The B four, to the extent that such policy can be legally implemented, that might, that might, or you put that in there for that reason. And I think that's a question when Bishop figure out. I'm here, you.
No, I just didn't see that, so this is an interesting problem.
Okay.
So I'll put it on my list to do the research to try and find, if there's any.
Okay, you all agree, you're on.
I, I think.
Okay, um, B six, sure, you know, we'll get money.
No, and and the update program discussion that I had in there is to a specific to if there's ever sort of. Financing things that can put in that specific program, so we have a finance agency, I think there's a California home now that wanted to add in, so that was really big.
Uh, then I, um, if there's any reason, move on to C two, Mr. Figure.
No, I mean, I think, um, I like the fact that we're doing it a year, that we're doing eight interviews for. Some reasons, so that's, no more questions.
Mr. B.
My question, Mr. Figures, having through this, but the real question is, I don't believe there are anybody in front of free use at present time care. Or care any A G A to plan.
They are not. We're going to see that.
That was a question. This, any development forward, we need to be compliant, so is that, is that, so that we're not going to require?
The house, I mean, private, private homes have to. I think, I think that's more of this, yeah, public, public, that kind of stuff, I don't.
Well, sure.
Well, certainly, yeah.
I'm sorry. No. That is, your standup, I know the attitude, I don't think I do, um, I don't know if there's a requirement or a A G A plan, sure.
Okay, and the new development is not a part of me.
Any new development in front of A U, I I might have to be, I doubt, Joe doesn't know that.
Well, I'm sure that the infrastructure, like, like, to get around it has to be, but I don't think the home has to.
You'll have to get that, Sean.
B five.
Um, sorry, there's a few, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the only question I have is, it's separate from both them, what, what is that, is, does anybody?
So, um, the way that the promotional, um, works for A to use is that, um, and we have something sort of. In our husband already, but you provide information on, um, some H T B programs are asking that they have office hours for A to use. Um, this is not practical in the city, not in that, but, um. You know, prior, providing pamphlets, putting it in the A P R, uh, different methods to be able to say, you know, here's, put it on the website, here's a specific A to process, things like that. That's what they consider promotional and we actually have to get specific in the updated program and say this is exactly what we.
Eagle, did I?
Okay, um, I guess, uh. Mr. Figure Z three.
Um, no, I mean. Nothing else, uh, sure, I'm sure.
Okay.
Um, to C four, Mr. Figure.
No, it's, we want.
Never, good.
Okay, I see you're just adding a reference to. This day loss, that's our again. Right, there's a requirement that you, that, um, water purveyors have to provide, that's first come, they put the water available to. So we're putting that in the ordinance, that's the change specifically, and then we're, um, identifying. Meeting at least annually or twice a year with the, um, agencies of water, there's one manager district and water. Rainless Water District are having them come here for presentation somehow so that we keep the track and movement on trying to ensure water. And take the rest, that's good.
Do you want, Mr. Figure?
Um, no, no question.
Mr. B.
Oh, this is just a lot of workshops.
We couldn't look at that, um. Provide fair housing education shows at city hall on English and Spanish, put information on the city website. Um, and provide information with city booster, what I had of, and in, of in twenty nineteen as well. But if there's another thought that you could, should we have it?
No, I was curious, yeah, workshops, says, says, uh, for.
Oh, yeah, I think that really is, I'm sorry, um, update program is just the language in the program.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Figure, D two.
No, the goal is good.
So, so right now, any house can be converted into a facility that's already done with a.
I'm sorry.
And so here it says, um, housing for elderly disabled. Oh, sorry, am I? You too. Uh, has any significant needs groups, and so I'm just curious, like, currently, right now, um, is any residential will be needed? Converted.
So right now, that's, yeah, or is it just? Okay. Well, right now, state law requires, um. Just define life of residential care for still looking to allow small residential care homes, right, and whole residential zones.
Okay.
So, so. Okay, and this is the same, the group points of six or fewer are allowed in all zones now, under state law. Not sure this type of, it needs to be saved to update the program, but no change. Yeah, sure, sure, sorry. I think that's a definite mistake, I think, which one has happened, don't change your setting. I think that, um, I wanted to clarify some of the language, I changed, I changed, I said both.
And to your question, I went out shopping for a place for my mom to live and the places that the decent, they're common. Their care facilities, they are, they are homes that are, the bedrooms are.
Oh, this is building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe that's right. So let's get completely changed, uh, D four, uh, some, Mr. Figures.
Uh, next, I understand, thank you, uh, so we actually, this is a program to, uh, provide for emergency shelters. Um, by right, state law, we amended the zones to do that, so, um, I'm inviting the program to acknowledge that. Um, so the only change is going to be to the program is updated to identify that it's, um, you won't have to say. Providing emergency shelters, they want to start them and then, um, they'll be just, we kind of wanted to do the same thing in terms of adding information that on campus. Simple, so those are the only.
Okay, this reconciliation is the only, is the.
No, no question. Mr. B, no questions.
No.
Uh, B five, no change, unless we get a comment. B one, no change.
But I think you said you want to update this one, it needs to be bigger vision, email. I, if I did, I don't want to, oh, yeah, I wrote it down, but if you see them, I, we'll have to go back and listen to that.
Okay, so anybody on B two? B three, and then you added that in four and B five, um, so maybe, but you have to start to coordinate those.
Yes, so D seven, before that was, you know, the design, I don't know if there's a way to, um, stop picture and.
Oh. Oh, better, oh, do you?
Yeah, yeah, so D seven, I think we already discussed that's adoption of the universal design ordinance, um, and that's new. And, um, this language is, will be expanded, this is just the idea, do you want to adopt universal design ordinance as recommended by the speakers? Um, it seems to get some endorsement, I think, through a couple of the workshops. Quite well, and, um. I'll come back again, it's adopted of an ordinance, um, so we'd have to come back, you know, after that, when it's adopted. These programs are coming for the next eight years, you know, so the implementation of them would be over the next eight year cycle. The eight year cycle of twenty, you know, ending in twenty. Not everything will come along, it's the filing commission, but, uh, we do have something catch up today to the state law. And then the next one that I think the question. So universal design, um, is an opportunity to have already set codes, design already ready so that, um, as explained to me and as I've researched it thus far. So that, um, if you have, um, development that's gonna be used in all universal design, then. It could be more readily available, accessible for disabled people and of course elderly. And there's certain codes that I was talking to, I had a little, our village factor, um, that are already applied. And it's easier for them to to go through the checklist, but also as people are aging in and out of their, uh, population. Um, it reduces the amount of displacement because, you know, if you're not, universal design is like different levels of counter talk and things like that.
Walk and drive.
I agree, I agree. What I don't understand is, what are we saying we're gonna do, adopt a universal design ordinance? Which is a program to, you know, provide a universal design in the processing. The housing element says, what are you doing that's a constraint or non-constrained to affordable housing or? So the issues that we're trying to address are displacement, mobility, serving the elderly, serving disabled. So we're looking at that first, what are the, what are the special needs groups? Um, what do we have that's already, um, you know, powerful for them and what can we do that's new? The planning, at the, one of the workshops, there was a, um, a person that was an expert in, um, elderly care. And made this suggestion and, um, it seemed like it's reasonable and also appropriate for our aging population in Delrayo particularly. So, um, we will develop a better language on this particular policy, I wanted to make sure we kind of gauge that, um. Whether or not this would be something that the final commission will be interested in. I'm hearing not, I'm seeing not even.
Did, uh, do you have any, any question?
I mean, that was, that was seen as specifics, I mean, I think the idea of having some sort of, uh, input, sort of, I don't know why, the, 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 the goal was, was, uh. That kind of goal sounded good.
I think this is just a commitment to look in.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
We shouldn't say.
So I guess, uh, E four.
This is something that you're doing, is providing the N L partnership for to the city, our education, it's coming, we do really well already. Um, we're just using this as a tool to be able to check in more with how, with this. And B five is, I feel good, permanently for repair housing, um. Is enhancing mobility strategies, it's a program that we wanted to add in because it fits really well with our A F F H. Large report that we have to do, um, and, um, sort of protects, again, trying to. Put all these things together to protect it, so rather than some displacement, identifying that, um, we'll have more specifics in terms of implementation. Question on that? Oh, we've been an hour.
Because we've, uh, probably.
I'm not coming here.
See, I may ask a quick question. Do I need to go there? Equal housing opportunities, that is just one, I don't think it makes sense. Like here, how much, five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand bucks? How much is an equal housing proportion in Delrayo's? Yeah.
It's a very good comment, that, that, that's really what the whole housing element, I mean, housing crisis in California and Delrayo's is about. And so the, the requirements that you're seeing here are how do we address this large disparity of cost versus ability for the normal person or someone that's, you know. Born and raised or someone that's moving in here, that's a waiter or.
Well, you know, in other, can be built for something like two hundred. If you build it too. If you build it too bad, can be built for three hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but what happens here? Would that be building, could we do that?
Well, that's the, each of these programs is trying to do something, it may not be that exact thing, but. So the, as an example, the inclusion housing ordinance that we talked about, one of the programs would be, if the developers coming in and they're building. The housing, then they would build at market rate that they're gonna sell for, for the product, then they're required to build a certain percentage of the houses for portable, um. For those.
Portable.
Portable.
Sir.
Through the chair, sorry.
Okay, seeing, um, then, um. Offer improvement, this being.
Sorry, I didn't have a few other general questions, but, being as I was only, they weren't specific, and I, those aren't, okay, just, um. So, when are we gonna see the, the, the full six cycles, updating, all in one place? Uh, what's the date on that?
Uh, so I think the one before we have to, so, here's public participation, this is exactly feeding into the question, when does public get to see, when do you get to see the whole thing? Um, you will, hopefully, we're hoping to get that published on the website, it's going through city review, our review right now, um, by end of next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then that's a thirty day review period, the day from the website will have announcements and everything.
Okay.
Um, and after that, we get, we gather the comments from the public, and if anyone chooses to comment. Um, we have minimum of two weeks that we have to really look at those and update that, then that goes to H C D for their ninety day review, and you can.
Okay, so till you go, we won't see the N four, there was H C D, you'll, you'll take comments, and go right on, and then just get sent off to H C D?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
That's correct, and then, because we're gonna need to get it at H C D.
Yeah, no, I understand, I.
Yeah, so we're kind of.
I understand the working back, that's why I was asking.
There's actually a jurisdiction that's, that's doing the, you know. Doing the same thing, just because, and no other jurisdiction has been able to actually implement a six cycle, than, than our area, so, uh, you know, everyone's. Everyone's facing a very tough time, I'm like.
Yeah.
So, who approves what we send to H C D? The city manager, was that what I do?
And this is at least the second that we've had the opportunity to comment on it.
Yes, this, well, in terms of, they're, the different, um, workshops, we could actually, there's actually something that we, we could have just. Done two workshops and jumped right to the H C D president and, and that would be, um, because that's what H C D is allowing right now, in terms of the president. Um, but yes, we've had workshops in March, um, and May, like, on third, and then this May seventeen.
And I accept a reply, just curious.
It's okay.
Since the six cycle element, housing element, has to contain a section of anyway, that this cycle brings to assess, to assess, to see. Progress and effectiveness, and I'm thinking, okay, we, we still have a six cycle approved, how, how's it gonna work?
So you'll have to adopt this cycle, however, the city council without.
Oh, if we were to adopt it, like.
Right, yes, because that, um, if we think about it, what we've been doing in adopting the emergency housing ordinance, uh, A D U ordinance. And the policy that you just looked at all, like, which are existing, those are existing policy, and they're very similar to, um. The ones that you had in the previous two thousand and six, never adopted, haven't, or.
Okay, so, so, we're making, making progress, making changes based on what the councils, not necessarily what H C D has signed off on, they still.
Well, H C D signed up on that, they wrote a letter.
Oh, that we can change this.
I'm sorry. H C D wrote a letter in November of twenty nineteen, that the only thing you need to do is implement your zoning ordinance. And, um, the rebump of the zoning of those sites, and adopt your emergency shelter ordinance, and you'll have a compliance, it's called an additional compliance.
Okay, oh. That was.
Yeah, unfortunately, then, lots of.
Yeah, right, right.
So those are the only two things, and those are, you know, half done. And that's, it is, um, a difference for jurisdiction than others.
Yeah.
Um, so the sixth cycle is what we're talking about tonight, and, um, we'll come back after, you know, with H C D's comments.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
If you could give me a quick clarification, what you can build in the cities? Parking structure, long distance.
Thank you for asking that, so, we are actually. Airport land use commission, to get more specific information about that. Um, so, you're required to be, uh, water county airport land use commission, you're required to go before them, um, when you have anything in the, uh, in the area. So, um, because we thought that it'd be good to also look at the areas of. Where whose lodges and, and in that area, and see, um. What the limitations are, so we're going before them and asking that specifically for that area.
Do you think they're the airport board, or you said?
Airport land use commission, it's a county commission that's charged, if you're, if you're doing a housing element or general plan element, or any development that's around the airport within any of these zones. Um.
That's all, so it's not just our moderator, like, the city's board.
Any of our, yeah. So, um, and, um, I did get an email back from, um, the representative of county, and she didn't identify exactly, I don't have that in front of me, like, I'd say, what, what can you do where? It's a little bit complex, so.
Based on distance and.
Distance, and I definitely, identification, and there, um, and there, you know, um, why does that? They're approaching, and it's changed. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Um, I'll turn the C's.
Thank you.